To order, will you please stand and join me in a moment of silence? Let's Councilman Webb to lead us in our pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Danielle, will you please call the roll?
This is Mayor Dolph Meyer.
Here.
Mr. Vickers?
Here.
Ms. Lillard? Mr. White?
Here.
Oh, oh, sorry. Mr. White?
Here.
Mr. Pettit?
Here.
Mr. Sowers?
Here.
Mr. Webb?
Here.
All right, do we have any additions to or deletions from the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to add 7B, under seven boards, commissions, departmental reports. B would be the FYI 2026 budget update.
Okay. Need a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Danielle?
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
And Ms. Lillard?
Yeah.
Okay. Consent agenda. Mr. Vickers?
Yes. I move to accept the filing consent agenda, the minutes of the regular council meeting, August 12th, 2024, and accounts payable totaling $419,022.10.
Backer.
Discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yeah.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Okay, general citizen comments, Mr. Roke. Tim, do we have your name and address?
Had to push a little button there, yeah.
Did we change your batteries in it?
Yeah, the light's not on, I bet not. Well, I can, I can stand up. I can do this. Final trip on that. Anyway, I just go over here. Well. It's one of those nights.
We're already ahead.
All right, so it's Tim Roke, 156 Ridge Road.
Yep, Tim Roke, 156 Ridge Road in Rileyville. I also own a building here on Main Street, 58 West Main Street, so I believe I have standing in the town. But just real quickly, just to, I know everybody knows about the E. coli and the Hawk spell, so rather than go on and on about that, but I appreciate the funding, the $3,000 or what, or the $3,000 that you allocated, and I also appreciate the cooperation with friends of the Shenandoah River. And you've also put up signs that once the E. coli was found, you put up the signs. But what I would like to discuss a little bit, have you reconsider, is what you have on the signs is elevated E. coli, and under these is a QR code and hyperlink, basically. And I just don't think that's reasonable to assume that anybody's on a take QR, use a QR code on their cellphone, trying to scan through the pages on your cellphone, expand it and kind of read it, and then you got to go to another page, try to understand what that number meant, then you got to look at that number, and, you know, I forgot my glasses, and I think we need to be a bit more either transparent. I know that there's legal quandaries that have, that with what you can say and what you can do, but I'd like to just explore another avenue, either be perhaps just don't swim or wade in the Hawk's bill. Like, you know, then when it's, the E. coli is done, you just pull up the signs. And you can have the QR code underneath that, but be more, I think more, either it's not more transparent, more, what, what's the word I want?
General terms.
More general terms, rather than try to go through the, through the QR codes. And plus, QR codes aren't really secure on our system, someone could hack that too, so it's really not a good source of information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roke.
Thank you.
Okay, Susan Corbett.
You remember, may I press the bench?
Uh, yes, ma'am, certainly.
I'd like to pass these out if you don't want. Can you just stick with them? I, I created these because I want to make sure that everybody understands, um, um, all the stuff that's routinely in cow feces. I mean, nothing unusual, just the routine pathogens that are in cow feces. And it's pretty, pretty nasty. So, uh, here, I, I think I sent these around to y'all. These are some pictures of children playing in the, in the creek. This is recently. And I have quite a few, and other people have told me that they've seen children playing in, in the creek, okay? This lady, and I hope that I'm, that's not somebody's wife or mother or sister, dragged her beach chair out there and was out there the whole day. I mean, seriously, because I was going back and forth in town, and she actually moved around in the creek all day long, right after Debbie came through, when the E. coli counts were almost up to 1,000. So she obviously did not pay attention. So, so who are these beautiful children? These are two children that got sick from the ESTC, or the Shiga virus that it talks about from Lake Anna, which I, I had a conversation with Margaret Smiga on Friday. She is the head of the waterborne illness from the Department of Health in Richmond. She identified for me that it was indeed an outbreak from the Shiga from cows, and put these little girls in the hospital. A number of people were in the hospital. And one of these little girls had to have a blood transfusion because she, you know, you can get what they call hemolytic ure- uremic syndrome, where your kidneys go into failure. And this is just from the E. coli. So, what those folks did is they hired a guy named Bob Marler from Marler &amp; Clark, which is the largest, best-known law firm that deals with sicknesses caused by pathogens in the water. So they're trying to recoup some of their hospital expenses from all these people being in the hospital. So I guess what I'm trying to say to y'all is that I think there's more that you can do. I agree with Mr. Rock, Rocky, I forget, can't say his last name, that you need something a little more impressive in terms of signage. We have to keep people out of that creek until such time as we can clean it up. I think you should write a strongly worded letter to the Board of, Page County Board of Supervisors, saying, "Look, we can't do anything about the creek, but you can." And they can. They can do something about this. And I'm going to try to talk to them again on the meeting on the 7th. But I think the town should send them a letter, say, "Hey, we got a problem here. We have a beautiful greenway. We spent millions of dollars on it. People come to it all year round, and yet we have great liability here with pathogens in the water." So I think there's more we can do. I hope that you do more. You are the leaders of this town, and we look to you for guidance on this in keeping us safe and keeping these children safe. And we want to be able to recreate in that creek safely, so please do whatever you can do. I'm happy to help on anything. Call me, I'll come down and volunteer to do anything, so, thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right, Council, anybody, anything for Mr. Roke or Ms. Corbett?
And I will share, and this was yesterday, so I haven't really gotten a look at it, but Skip Halpern had sent me a nice potential communication that we could send to the county, and I mean, it's very just gracious and just reviewing that we had funded the testing and identified the issue and trying to do what we are with our I and I and everything, and just inviting them to take on a role as, you know, just because this is, this is a real issue, you know? So I'll mention that, and I'll probably send that to Brian, and just, I don't know the best way to do that, if that's just maybe have that come from Brian or us, or what, or anybody. We'll take a look at that. And then the other thing is, would it be reasonable to ask Jason that maybe you look at the, any liability issues that exist? I mean, we got a really good briefing from you about the lake and the swimming at the lake, obviously different set of issues, but I'd be interested if there was a liability for the town or if there was a way that signage should change to reflect that liability, to cover us, I mean, and I'm sure you might not be ready on the spot right now, but maybe that's something for you to look into.
Yeah, I'd be happy to look into that if the Council wants me to.
Okay, I think the way to handle this is to give it some thought, and we'll handle it at our work session in two weeks. Am I okay with it? All right. All right, Luray Downtown Initiative, Ms. Elliott.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Jackie.
Just a couple of quick notes. In your pockets, excuse me, in your pockets, there is an invitation to our business appreciation that we will be hosting at gathering grounds in October. I want to say October the 3rd. So we hope that you guys can make it. It's just something that we started last year, and it's our way of thanking our business owners downtown, our stakeholders, for investing in Luray and being a part of making Luray the great little town that it is. So we hope you can join us. Sunflower Festival was amazing. It was hot, but it was really good. We had about 2,000 people, which was about what we had last year, so we were really happy with that. It seemed like there were enough clippings to go around, and so people were carrying out bouquets and things like that. So we're just watching this event continue to grow. So we're, and just a huge, huge shout out to the Parks and Rec team. And if you see Jen and her team out and about, give them a pat on the back, because I'm telling you, they work so hard in helping getting this all put together. They're absolutely an amazing team to work with, and we're blessed to have them. Evenings on Main is this Friday. We have the Hasty Brothers, or excuse, Hasty Boys. So if you want to come down for some good entertainment on Friday evening. And then the only other thing is, we are now working on our trick-or-treat, which would be Thursday, October 31st. And again, this year, we're requesting that we close the street for that event. That seems to have been a big hit with everyone in the community.
Uh, that's, that's been approved? We're closing, Chief? Okay.
Yeah, okay.
It looks okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, very good.
And that's it.
Yeah, both the, the appreciation event last year and the Halloween event were both really nice.
Thank you, Alex. I appreciate it.
If people are around, I would encourage.
Yeah, thank you.
And the meagerie opened, is that right?
Yes, Saga opened up on Labor Day weekend. They opened up at noon on Saturday. And they're very nice folks. If you get an opportunity, please go over, introduce yourselves, have a drink. They, I've not tried the meagerie yet, so I'm curious to see what this tastes like. But, but no, they, and they seemed like they were having a pretty good day, from what I could tell. When I left the park a little after 4:00, I always do my run-through town on the weekends, and it was busy. I mean, folks were walking up and down Main Street. I saw people carrying shopping bags, and I just saw a lot of cars and some other folks when they were over earlier in the day at the festival. We asked them, you know, "What's town look like?" And they said, "It is slammed." So that's, that's what we want to hear.
Council, anything for Jackie? Thank you, thank you for what you're doing.
Thanks.
Great thanks, thank you. All right, item 7B, fiscal year 26 budget update. Brad?
Thanks for the addition, Mayor and Council. So just a quick update. Looking ahead at FYI 26, we're going to be taking a close look at our upcoming projects list, as well as upgrades to various equipment and infrastructure like we always do. Again, we always try to improve our vehicle fleet to keep our annual maintenance costs down. Operational costs, though, continue to expand between 2% and 7%, depending upon the department and their purchases. Some large-ticket items have seen 12% to 15% increases, with shipping costs that still remain at pandemic levels. So we're still paying the high-rate shipping, even though we've been a few years later. All consumables, such as fuel and electricity, are continuing with an upward trend, or they're holding at elevated levels. For potential revenues, we'll be examining all available options again this fall and winter. We'll be looking at our current local and state revenues to see if there are other revenue streams, such as cigarette taxes, admission fees or taxes, application fees, that would be helpful to us. We've been evaluating all these since the end of FYI 23. We'll be taking a careful look at our local taxes and fees to see if potential changes will assist in budget balancing efforts. Current budget projections indicate the difference between operational revenues and expenditures for FYI 25, which we're in right now, may come in somewhere at a target between plus 1% and minus 3%, depending upon if projections continue as they're showing right now. So we're very early in the year. We've gotten significant revenues, picture a little bit. Expenditures, we've already got stuff mapped out through past, you know, into the fiscal, or calendar year, rather. So we're going to track that closely and make sure, you know, the fact that we have a lean budget, and we try to pass a lean budget every year, and you guys do a great job with that, we just don't have a lot of capacity to take care of unexpected costs. You know, that really, stuff like that, that pops up, really catches us by surprise. And then we're back to you asking for amendment if the amounts are, you know, meet the threshold.
We, we don't do a great job. You guys do a great job.
You do a great job of proving it.
Writing a budget.
You do a great job of proving it, but thank you. You know, currently, the gap between incoming revenues and outgoing expenses continues to narrow. These gap funds are what the town typically used, uses to complete important CIP projects in needs of priority. At some point soon, the town will need to take a look at a comprehensive program for implementing budget changes to fund operational expenses, as well as important CIP projects. I would recommend a council work session to consider those topics. We will also need to look at financing options for our larger projects that are currently in design, such as our continuing I and I repairs, the new sludge processing technology at the wastewater treatment plant, new water enhancement facilities in the western part of Luray, and completion of the East Luray Sewer Improvements Project. Some of you may remember that. That was a potential rural development component. We're probably going to go back to that drawing board and see what we can do with them again. That's really the only place in town where you can get high-quality financing for 40 years, is USDA. So we'll take another look at that. In order to provide adequate funds for anticipated expenses, we'll either need to expand our revenues or increase those revenues. Reduction of community programs, citizen service, and related staffing. While there are certainly options, they're definitely not recommended, you know, from, from our, our point of view, if we can continue to provide services at the levels we have been. I anticipate having department heads begin their work on their top CIP projects, listing with the estimated cost this December. And once we get mid-year numbers by mid-January 2025, DB usually, you know, sends out the worksheets for active budgeting, for operational budgets, you know, at that time for all department heads. So we'll continue that. But I do want to get a little jumpstart on the CIPs. It's taken us a little bit longer to get estimates back, to get quality estimates back. So if we don't start a little earlier, we don't have good numbers to give you guys to be able to put in those strapped budgets. I hope to schedule the first budget priorities meeting at our January 2025 work session with Council. That's where, hopefully you folks will tell us, what are your saving priorities for the year? What are your spending priorities for the year? If you have specific things, that's when we need to hear them, so we can try to build them in. Anyway, that's all I have, if anybody has any questions.
Questions for Brian?
Thank you.
Thank you. Just will stay up. Brian, you, special use permit 24-011, 102 North Lee Street.
Okay, so in your packets, public hearing, set up for special use 24-001 for a lodging house at 102 North Lee Street. This is in the R3 High Density Residential District. Joey, can you advance for me on the thing? Thank you, to keep them up to date. You can use my seat if you want. The special use permit is required to operate a lodging house in the High Density Residential R3. The conditions are there. They're the same as usual. And at the August 14th Planning Commission Meeting, public hearing, it was recommended for approval 5 to 1 with Stonewall voting nay. So other than that, we have not had any comments, either by email or phone or Dropbox, for this particular public hearing issue.
All right, I'll open the public hearing on special use permit 24-011. Does anyone, no one signed up to speak. Does anyone here tonight want to speak on this, this special use permit? Hearing nothing, I will close the, the public hearing. Council?
I, I'm excited that we're going to do some good stuff later on in the meeting. And I guess I will note that I do think, obviously, this one wouldn't be affected by the changes that we would make. The next one will be, because it would be R4. But I will note that I think both of the ones that are up tonight were, as far as I know, they were previously occupied by families. I know, I know this one was, because I knew the guy. I'm not sure about the other one, but I'm pretty sure it was as well.
Yeah.
So that's something to consider, but.
I think something else, I know that this was Jerry Judd's property for many, many years. I was a neighbor bordering this in the back. And Lot 21 is also a piece of this property. It's not highlighted.
Correct.
But it's a good-sized lot, and the apartments, which are what you see there, 106 from the aerial, well, Lot 20. Anyway, there's, with the vegetation, the mature trees, and the distance, there's quite a bit of space between this and 20, and it's right on the edge of B1, if I'm not mistaken. The insurance agent office there, Bob's there at 1623A. And then, of course, you're looking at the restaurant and everything else. So it, it's a property that, and I'm saying this for a reason too, knowing what else is coming up. But the, the buffer that's here, sitting right on the edge of B1, and I don't see concerns with this like I have in, in many others. But anyway, just something to think about.
And I'm just, I'm going to keep with my streak on these, but they, they did have a nice proposal and business plan and everything, so. Absolutely, give them credit for all that.
All right, Council, anybody else?
No, I mean, it's well thought out. It's, it's a good placement, relatively. I understand the, the concerns as far as housing. Of course, we all share those, but it's a spot that makes sense for what it is, and that none of the neighbors have said anything. It means, means a lot to me, so.
All right. Do we have a motion? Again, do we have a motion? You go away.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Got it.
Mayor, this is the mail through, okay. Is something else to add?
Uh, Legan, did you already?
Yeah, I mean, I'll go ahead and start. I'll make a motion to approve SGP 24-011, 102 North Lee Street, special use permit for a lodging house in the R3 District.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yeah.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Christmas, special use permit 24-013.
Okay, this is 523 Luray Avenue. This has been on and off. The owners own this property and another property on O'Flin Street. They've been using these as primarily long-term rentals for, like, nurses and teachers and things like that. But they would like to turn this one into the possibility of a short-term rental between those leases. So they're going through the special use permit process. It is located in the R4 High Density Residential Boomfield. Of course, special use permit is required. Did get a few comments about this one electronically, primarily, the folks could not be here tonight, but it had to do with parking in front of the dwelling, where the current parking is, and that's shown on an aerial, the very last page of the proposal, 1, 2, 3 cars. But they just want to make sure that the parking was going to be there. The actual driveway is on the adjacent lot. It's not on the lot that goes with this house. So they were concerned about using the rear alley and parking in the backyard, or doing a variety of other things. But as long as they're going to park out front, like they're showing here, there really is not a lot of concern with that. And so the neighbors were happy about that response, so.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. No one has signed up to speak. Does anyone here tonight wish to speak on this special use permit? All right, hearing nothing, I will close the public hearing. Council?
I'll go ahead and start. Contrary to what I mentioned as far as the positives with the first one, being right next to B1 in the large buffer, I've driven out to see all these houses. But this one, 523 is from the street. Of course, I didn't get out and go measure it. From the street, it looks like no more than about eight feet between the exterior wall of this home, 523, and the exterior of the other home, 525. And with that proximity like that, you can even see from the aerial shot if anybody's pulled it up. It's just the, the line that highlights it. You can't even see a separation. But that's, that's a concern of mine, just sharing that.
I did get one citizen concerned, just pointing out that, you know, we've had a couple on Luray Ave, and we're talking about close proximity to schools and affordable housing. So just a citizen did share that with me. They, they were adamantly against this one. Just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, this, this is like the, the kind of thing that came to mind when we started throwing together the ordinance, and I was like, maybe we shouldn't do R4, because this is really your, your family housing in proximity to a school neighborhood. I mean, if anywhere in the town of Luray is that, it is the Boomfield, so that's my concern. But we're going to, hopefully get some good stuff done tonight.
Are we getting ready to restrict it in R4 potentially?
Yeah.
Isn't, okay.
Yeah. R4, R5, and P and D, I'm pretty sure.
And, you know, like you said, Jason, I mean, I take my kids out to the park a lot, and I've noticed that before this even came up, it's like, wow. You could literally stand outside of each other's window and apply shake hands, or inside of, inside your homes, so it's that.
It's very cool.
So I, I, I guess the neighbors. So I, I guess the neighbor, the adjacent neighbor hasn't said anything? Negative, or adverse to it?
Yeah, and actually, the house that was built there, 525, was built too close to property line, had to get a PCA approval, because their side setback was too close. So that's the neighbor besides, that's the house beside them, on the corner, not this house.
All right, again, council, we need a motion one way or the other.
I'll make a motion. I move that the special use permit 24-013 be denied for the reasons noted, and those reasons, as I mentioned in discussion, the close proximity to the, to the neighboring house.
I second that.
Any more discussion?
There'll be one more yes than I expected tonight.
I'll just, I think this makes good sense, because I remember the one that came a couple years ago, was in Boomfield, and I was a little bit, you know, you know, had a hard time convincing me to vote for it, but I did. But considering that we're going to, essentially, I think, the next move is to restrict it in R4, I feel like we should, you know, my personal opinion is to give them the same sort of process, and, you know, we approved everyone else so far, we're getting ready to restrict it. This is the last one in the door. I don't think it's a great area for short-term rental, you know, for me personally, but neither, neither do I believe, you know, you're close to your neighbors over in Luray Landing as well. So, although no, but I understand where you're coming from. I think it's probably, I'm glad we are restricting it now in R4. I think it makes sense.
Anybody else?
And just to clarify, Mayor, if I may, that with the motion being to deny, we would actually be voting yes, just a reminder too.
Right, we'd be voting yes if you agree with it.
Yes, to deny, yeah.
Right, if you agree with the denial.
Yeah, thank you.
Just a question for Jason. Do we have any issue with this being considered arbitrary, capricious, anything like that? It's not, considering it's in keeping with forthcoming potential ordinance?
I don't see an issue. The council has discretion to make a specific fact-based analysis of every application for special use permit, because I see this one as being fairly debatable either way, which is the standard that would apply if anyone were to choose to challenge it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And no issues likewise with it already being a long-term rental, and now changes, because it's just the nature of this is still substantively different enough to warrant such a decision?
Yes, the fact that you've had neighbors that have raised concerns, but then also each, each application is different enough that it's a very, very loose standard that applies, a very high standard for somebody to meet, to try to challenge the county council's decision.
Okay, all right. Any more discussion? All right, again...
Jerry, for posing that question.
And I'll just, I'll chime in, just because I've always felt this way from a process standpoint. It almost seems like unless there was an identical application with an identical house in an identical place that we approved before, we have the broad discretion. I mean, that's why the decision comes to us every time. Like, I've never bought the thing that our hands are tied because we did something before. But I also get it, because you don't want to be sued by somebody, and somebody can be wrong, take it to court and make it spend a lot of money. So I do get it, but...
So everybody's like snowflakes, is that what you're saying?
I guess so. I guess so. They're all very special.
Not do the same, right?
That's right, they're all special.
All special.
All right, are we ready to vote? Again, a yes is to deny. Okay, thank you for reminding us, Jason. Daniel?
Mr. Webb?
No.
Mr. Vickers?
I've listened, yes, yes, I vote yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Okay, that special use permit is denied. Okay. Mr. Christmas, special use permit 21, 24-014.
Switching gears from lodging houses. So our last special use public hearing for the evening is 21 Grove Road. Mr. Kim and Clayton Holmes would like to replace what was formerly an existing citywide unit with a cement foundation, you know, continuous masonry foundation, Clayton Holmes' manufactured home. And in the R3 district, you have to have a special use permit currently to get a manufactured home to be placed there. Included in your packet on the cover letter are the recommended conditions. Apparently, according to our research and our site visits, they meet all of those criteria for a manufactured home, as well as meeting and exceeding the setbacks for that particular lot. That's a very large lot in R3, and Mr. Kim is going to be placing that there. There is a shared driveway access that travels back to Lot 78, if you look at the survey plat, which I think is two pages deep. That has an easement with it, but there's still, you know, probably 20 feet from the edge of that. So plenty of side setback, plenty of front and rear setbacks. The only special conditions that we had indicated were if sewer or water connections need to be upgraded, that would be the responsibility of the applicant to work with Mr. Matthews and the public works crew to get those done. We also had the setbacks noted, as well as all eight of the items that manufactured homes have to meet, either in the R3 or the R4 district. So no objection and no comments at all received on this one. This was approved 6-0 at the Planning Commission public hearing in August.
All right, I'll open the public hearing. No one has signed up to speak. Does anyone here tonight want to speak on this special use permit? Not, I'll close the public hearing. Council?
I mean, it's, it's an improvement to our housing stock, I think. Honestly, in general, the quality where these things are versus when a code like this was adopted, we could probably be much more permissive with manufactured housing in our code.
You're right, Alex. Got a motion?
Oh, I will make a motion. I will absolutely make a motion.
And I'll second it. Now, I do have a question. Is this a modular home or a mobile home? So is it personal property, or is it...
This is manufactured home, so it is not a transportable trailer manufactured under the Mobile Home Act. It is a manufactured facility that is built, stick-built in pieces, and they bring it in, and, in sections, and it's set with crane on the foundation typically. And in Luray, we require a continuous concrete masonry foundation. Out in the county, you can get away with piers and skirting, but not in town. You have to have a concrete or a cinder block foundation all the way around in order to set that unit on to be approved, manufacturer home in Luray. So that's a nice addition, and really, when the products are done by Clayton Holmes or North American Homes, when they made them, really tough to tell the difference. We are seeing a fair number of modular home requests now for the modular pieces that are stick-built in individual subsections and brought in and assembled on the site. So those are virtually indistinguishable from a stick-built home on the premises. So I'd like to see some more of that construction. It is more affordable typically for folks to be able to do that. But I do agree, Alex, this is one of the topics we have on our major topics list for the comp plan, is to look at how we can remove stumbling blocks for folks for more affordable housing in some of our zoning districts, and this is one we're going to look at.
Absolutely.
Alex, I believe you want to make the motion.
I do. I move that special use permit 24-014 be present, be approved with the conditions as presented.
Joey, you want to second?
And I'll second that, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, any more, any more discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
All right, item D, lodging house ordinance amendments. Mr. Christmas, I assume you have that as well?
Yeah, I...
And we already have the information, right?
Happy to talk about it. Everything's in your packet. There's a brief cover letter. Jason has made several changes and updates to the proposal. I did also, this past week, include his red-line version to you with his comments as part of the weekly report, so you'd have the ability to see his thought process and how he got to the changes that he got to. So as far as we can tell, everything that the council has talked about the last two times you've looked at this has been incorporated in the new, this new draft ordinance amendment. So unless anybody has any questions, that's all I've got to say. Previously, the Planning Commission had forwarded these items, and some of these are different than what they had forwarded, but they've been watching the update process pretty carefully and heard some good things from them the last meeting.
Yeah, I, I know that this is pending discussion, but this was subject to a very deliberative process for two years, maybe even a surprisingly deliberative process for a relatively high demand issue for a lot of people. So I'll go ahead and move that the proposed lodging house ordinance amendments be approved.
And we need to have a public hearing.
Oh, shoot. I'll be in line.
We did, yep, yep. If you want to open that, I do have one comment in your packet.
Okay. Okay, I will open the public hearing on the lodging house ordinance amendments. No one has signed up to speak. Does anyone here tonight want to speak on this? Not, I will close the public hearing. I believe we do have one letter, don't we, Mr. Christmas?
We do, from Ms. Ruth. A comment email came in August 14th. It's in your packet. You've seen it once before, just as an informational item. Betsy brings up, you know, a lot of good points. They've operated a few things in and around, you know, Luray for a while. In fact, they do have an application in process to re-jumpstart, jumpstart the old Woodruff Inn at the corner of Mechanic and Lee. And so that, that application plus one other are actually in process right now.
So on her, on her point regarding the entire home, I don't think that's an issue, right? Because my understanding that the entire home would mean that it's essentially only one rental per home, and there's no other substance of use at the home, correct?
Yeah.
Like a closet or a basement that's locked off so they can service the home doesn't material impact this?
That's correct. Yeah, because it's really set up for, if you're going to operate the thing where you're going to have multiple different rooms there, it's going to be more of a B&amp;B operation, and you really need to apply for that instead.
And that was the rationale for why there can't be more than one dwelling, because then it's just a different definition.
Correct. It gets, it gets a little fuzzy when you talk about that, and that's why Jason selected the wording he did. Yep. Good question. Thank you, Joe. And that's all I had, Mayor, for comments on the... I did get one email from a local business owner, and he was just interested in when this would take place and how. And, and I responded to him electronically and said, well, you know, the council's going to consider it tonight. If they elect to act on it tonight, then it'll become effective soon as the ordinance is signed, and then we can start moving forward. Now, like I said, Jason had indicated some additional language in there on your notes section for applications that are in process at the time that the, the ordinance amendments are made, and we have accommodations for those. So there are two of those, as of tonight. So, and that's will be all that, that will be considered to be in process.
I'd like to ask what y'all think about the idea, he says, all the contact information, doesn't think the town should be able to call his handyman at midnight. I read that with interest.
Yeah, we're not going to call his handyman. We just want to make sure that he has a handyman. And by asking them to provide that information along with those contact numbers lets us know that they've thought that process out, so that the town doesn't get the phone call that, hey, the bathroom's packing up, somebody needs to come over here and fix this. We need them to be able to call the owner, or call the handyman, or call somebody.
I also saw that, he said that, you know, everything we do is put online, so his concern that who he chooses to be his handyman, is that really public knowledge? I mean, I don't know. I don't think it is.
He can change it tomorrow if he'd like. I mean, you know, the thing is, is that all we're asking them to do as part of the process is to make sure you think about who's going to do the trash component, who's going to do the cleaning, who's going to do the handyman services for emergency repairs after hours, just so that kind of makes the applicant think through the whole process, whether they provide that information, whether we post that online or whatever. Little bit of a different issue there, I think, in terms of information. Most of these are business people that have public ads out there, you know, they're going to be getting a little bit of advertising, you know, if they're listed in an application online for some services like these. But really, the point, Ron, is to try to get them to think through all of that, to make sure they've made allowances for all that for their guests.
And I'm sure that we also have certain owners that may be less than accessible at 9:00 PM at night.
That's occurred before, and we end up the next morning getting a phone call. And even though we have nothing to do with the property, we allowed that permit to be approved, and we, we need to do something about that. So we'd like to make sure that they think all this through and provide that information. I'm not really big about the names and all that kind of stuff. I just want to make sure they have thought it all out and, and have resources for their guests.
I agree with that.
That's really what it is. Thank you.
So the only one I take question with, and I think it's an excellent point, is if it's a large property, which there are some large properties in town that have more than three bedrooms, is there really, what is our rationale for limiting it to three beds and six guests? If it's a four-bedroom house and eight people want to stay there, do we object to that? And if so, what, would be on what grounds?
My guess is because we worry about having enough parking spaces for eight people. That's what I'm thinking, it's got to be.
Yeah, one of the original comments on this way back a couple of years ago was the fact that because these are being proved individually by special use permit in residential neighborhoods, the, the goal was to try to limit the impact on the neighborhood by controlling the number of people, the number of cars, the amount of individuals that would be in that dwelling at any given time. That was, that was one of the reasons it was written in the notes a couple of years ago, was, that was the impetus for, now, you know, by right in B1, there are no limitations on three bedrooms and six people. But by special use in residential neighborhoods, the, the original design, I believe, was parking and to try to control the, the noise and numbers impact, you know, to that residential neighborhood, by picking a smaller number and sticking with it.
And there's something that precludes us from later on, making that change. Like, if we had someone, well, the house across the street from the first one we approved tonight, if that house wanted to become like that, they have more of an ample parking, it's setback from the road, it's a large property, it might make sense. So if it comes before us, we could certainly, not that is, just as an example, we could make a change like that.
I agree. I think we're close to being right with what we currently have. I mean, if we were the outer banks where there's structures being built that are, you know, six-plus bedrooms and things like that, you know, we don't really have that with what's existing, pretty much. And my concern would be, we're not going out and physically inspecting these homes, we're looking at, at plats and drawings or whatever. I could see someone taking what was originally designed to be a two- or three-bedroom home and taking what was the den or the dining room and saying, well, this is bedroom number four, and those type of things to where, yes, they may say it's four bedrooms, but never designed to handle that, that volume.
Well, we are reviewing floor plans, right? So that would already be kind of, that would be a little less covered.
Right, and then we also double-check things with the building officials' office and see how many bedrooms were actually permitted in the home when it was actually constructed, if they have a record.
But a lot of these are not even on record.
Correct. A lot of the real old ones are not.
They're not even going to have it.
Yep, that's right.
Yep.
All right, anybody else? Alex, I think you want to move this motion again.
I got to make it twice.
You're on fire tonight, yeah. Twice, yeah, that's great. Go ahead.
Good night. I move that the proposed lodging house ordinance amendments be approved with the conditions as presented.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? Daniel?
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm more, Mayor, thank you, and then I'll sit down. Number 9A, comprehensive plan update request. plan update request. Basically, a request for the council. We're getting ramped up to get started on this. Brooke has already started working on major topics lists, and those are included, or will be included at your next meeting. They're in the planning commissions packet for the upcoming meeting Wednesday night. Essentially, what we're asking you folks to do is if you have specific subjects or specific general, large, general topics, and all, some of the ma, easy ones are already on there. Housing's on there, parking's on there, recreation's on there, infrastructure, transportation, pedestrian, all those things are usually on there, those big groups. Those are the big header groups that we set up around the room for people to come and provide individual comment on. But whether it's a big topic issue or a specific thing, if you have something like that, please provide that to us so that we can incorporate that into our list with the planning commissions list. They're, they're creating their own individual list of specific things in the comp plan currently that they would like to address or to add. There's a good bit in the current comp plan that can come out. The other thing that they're charged with coming up with, and they won't hear that until Wednesday night, but I'll give them a little preview, they have to come up with the name for the new plan. So currently, the name is Forward, which is our town motto on our seal. So they have to come up with something for the FY twenty-five update. So that's one of their charged components. And if you guys have a great idea about that, give it to us. We'll add that to the list, too. But just trying to get you guys thinking about things that you currently see or hear discussed or receive comments from the public about. If there's something we need to be thinking about in terms of goals and methods for delivery, let us know what that is so we can try to build that in there.
I would just echo what you said earlier about identifying any unnecessary barriers to housing
Yep.
that exist in the zoning code. Because I mean, if you're, if you're a conservative person, that's a getting government out of the way issue, and if you're a liberal person, that's a meeting human needs issue. So it's, I think there's a lot to be done there, especially right now. The other thing, and I've talked about this with Barbie, and she had some good ideas, maybe for some of those sessions, if we could identify ways to really get into the community in places where people already are versus them coming into this room and going around the room. I think of like the rec or Page One. I don't know what that necessarily looks like, but
Yeah.
just trying to see where people are that wouldn't traditionally be represented in the process.
Right. And normally, what we try to do is we'll hold them in a room big enough to hold all of our stations and all of our, because each commissioner man's a station, you know, an informational station, and staff do, too. So we have to have room large enough to handle those people. Typically, we try to do the Blue Ridge Room at the Memsley, because it has enough space. We can get a drink set up there for tea and coffee and water, and then there's bathrooms right there, and it's handicap accessible. It's ADA accessible for, for individuals who want to come. But we can certainly look at other locations in the community that are big enough to handle that venue.
And really, only the rec comes to mind with those conditions. I just know that for me, I mean, before I got into all this stuff, like, we weren't even thinking about walking into the Memsley.
Yeah.
All respect to the Memsley, but you know what I, if you know what I mean, you know? So I think that might mean something to different people.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Christian. All right. Daniel, babe, ARPA funding update?
Yes. Council, it is requested to see updates related to past, current, and projected allocations and expenditures. At our last update on ARPA funding, I had advised council and staff that approximately fifty-two thousand remained in unallocated funds. Since that time, staff has several recommendations for council to consider. Those are listed in your staff report, and if you'll refer to the table as well. The first item is to consider reducing the remaining funds for, for legal fees.
Sorry, Jason.
Sorry.
Awkward, huh?
From thirty-five thousand to five thousand. That is just based on our historical expense. And then, number two would be to consider allowing accommodation of several related categories for easier tracking. That would be lines eleven and twelve, if you're following along there. And that would just combine legal fees. It would just be all inclusive of legal, administrative, plus out and audit expenses, just for ease there to, to combine this. Number three would be to consider allocating an additional thirty-two thousand seven hundred ninety-nine dollars to the Heightspring Improvements Project to enable the final project upgrades. That is a line item that was recently approved down toward the bottom of your sheet.
Forty-nine nine?
Yes.
Forty-nine thousand nine hundred?
I'm sorry, seventy-two, line seventy-two.
But
One nineteen nine twelve.
Oh, oh, my apologies.
Correct. We would be increasing that by the thirty-two thousand seven ninety-nine. And that is at the recommendation of Mr. Haddock and Town Manager. Number four would be to consider allocating forty-nine thousand nine hundred, and Joey, correct, this is a new line item, toward the Heightspring Roll Water Pumping Station for emergency operations.
Yes.
I'm sure if you all have questions about the specifics of that, Brian or Joey would be sent a better student to answer those. And lastly, would be to authorize the treasurer to make final adjustments to account for project overages and underages as they are completed. We've had a few projects that have come in at just, you know, within maybe thousand, two thousand dollars over, while another project may come in just under. So that would just allow me to make those adjustments, and of course, we would update you on the final, final items. Just keep in mind that the town is required to allocate in our inter, into vendor agreements prior to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, for these remaining funds. I know Brian feels the same as I do, that the sooner we do that, the better. We can enter into those agreements and sign, sign the necessary documents and get things moving on those projects. Those recommendations that we just listed would wrap up our ARPA funding, and we believe are in keeping with council's overall goal, which is to utilize the funds to improve water and sewer infrastructure. So I think we've done a really good job in, in keeping track with that. And that, that would wrap up our funds. So if you choose to act on those, we would greatly appreciate it. And if you have questions, I'm sure you'll answer me if specific.
Just one question, I'm sure you've already, you all have already answered, but would we, since we have to allocate beforehand, let's say we allocated next month, and then the project isn't completed till February, and we're like, oh, look, we, we did it for twenty thousand less than we thought, and we actually have five thousand left over, and years over, would we just apply, would we just allocate funds to a project that's far bigger that we're absolutely positive we're going to do?
Right. Jason pointed that out earlier, because he believes that if we, since the way we entered that paperwork, we're going to ask, take me to double check this with our count. Once we've made the initial allocation by the deadline and have that project under contract, we'll have to have it done, just have it, have it under contract. Once we've done that, we've met our obligation under the initial ARPA funding plan. So then, if in the next two years that we have to expend those funds through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, if we find that adjustments need to be made there, then we would obviously be kind of backing folks to do a reallocation or adjustment. But we're going to double check that, but I believe that that would meet our requirements. And if it does, then as soon as they're all fully allocated, we've met our obligation. But it's already September. If we don't get the monies allocated towards specific projects so that we have time to get vendors, contracts signed, we won't meet the December thirty-first deadline. So that's why we're pushing so hard right now is to try to get that right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, any more questions?
Was there interest in, did people feel like making motion tonight, or, I know we've got the suggested motions. I think all the projects have merit, and it would help staff do what they need to do.
I think we need a motion tonight, don't we, to get you all on the timeline to
I know it's listed discussion, but I included some potential questions if you guys want to take action tonight.
I don't think we have any argument on this.
No, I don't think so.
I'd say you're not going to answer any questions if you got them. Trust me.
I know what you're dealing with there, yeah.
Yeah.
It would certainly help us.
And plus, with this, with my side of it, if it's approved, we'll have this done probably within the next three weeks.
Awesome.
And deal now, we'll be done.
I, I don't think we want to wait another month, so
No.
Counsel, what's your else's pleasure?
I move that the listed ARPA allocations and recommendations be approved as presented.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? Daniel?
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Christman, wastewater trunk line, and I funding.
Okay, we've talked about this a couple times. It's kind of one of the start of those big ticket items that we addressed a little bit earlier. These will be with us for a few years, a few budget cycles sequentially, but it is something that I think is super critical for the town and its future operations. Currently, you've reviewed the plan from Pleasance Construction. We also have location recommendations from Race Engineering. Our, you know, my recommendation's going to be try to use any available sewer facility fees that we have, not the special proper fees from the relief, but actual just sewer facility fees that remain available in our sewer enterprise fund. And then whatever we don't have, we fill that gap with reserve funds to get the first phase of this, the three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars taken care of. And for that money, in the last paragraph of your covering report, it lists the individual segments that we'll take care of there. So there are six primary segments, as well as a crossing segment down below near the Greenway Loop, kind of just out from where the cattle water is, right out about there in the stream, and that would take care of that one. Along with the ten thousand dollar contingency would put us right about three seventy-five. This will be the first one. The next segment that we've been tackled be segments one, two, and three, which are closest to the plant. One of those segments has a negative grade on it, but it's installed. So slick lining that thing with some new polymer would definitely help things there. If we ever lower the intake point for the plant, when they change the armpit screws, it definitely helped that situation, but it was trying to push everything uphill, and hydraulically it did. But that means those lines, those three segments primarily stay underwater a hundred percent of the time. So how it's slip lined and make sure there's, it didn't really have a lot of outside leakage, it was just might decay from all of the effluent land, a hundred percent of the time, three sixty-five. So those would be next year's top three segments, because while they don't have the leak factor, they have a condition factor that makes it red in the chart. So you'll be seeing those things come back to you again. And then I'm also already getting estimates for segment two, which is the park and ride to just south of the Westman Street Bridge, in terms of what it would cost to carry that, as well as the three crossings that are in that segment. So that'll be, get a price for that. We'll probably try, try to tackle that next fiscal year in terms of
Brian, what's the, what's the lifespan of, when you reline a pipe?
When you reline a pipe with polyethylene that is sewer rated, you know, for the acids in it, in wastewater, you can get as much as fifty years out of that stuff.
Okay.
Some of them are even higher, but you're guaranteed at least five decades. So some of the pipes that are out there on the market now, you can get eighty years. They say, they claim that they'll give you eighty years of use, as long as they're installed correctly, if they install correctly. So, you know, there's fine print in the work.
Okay.
But, yeah.
That's good to hear, though.
It's a significant, we'll get a significant return on investment for this.
Help figure this line again.
That's an eighteen.
Eighteen.
Yeah.
This is the first time it's ever been lined that we
Since it was put in ground.
Okay.
Yeah. So we did, that's not true. There are several segments on here that are already done, that you're listed in your report. Those are already completed. We did those about five years ago, five to six years ago. Tom Brown was still there. And those are the big three then, and now we found some additional ones that we just need to, just keep chipping away at. And, you know, for every hundred thousand gallons of groundwater we don't allow into the wastewater plant is a hundred thousand gallons
We're not treating.
to build a lot of homes, and we don't have to spend the water, the one we treat, yeah, which is very expensive.
Wearing, tearing pumps, everything is working, all the moving parts.
And the UV light, electricity, and everything like that. So we, it's, it's just a huge savings all the way around for us. So it's a win-win-win when we can solve a nine problem as big as this one. And we're hopeful, we got our fingers crossed, that this thing will do significant good for us, and then we'll move on to the next segment.
And we're still hopeful of having it done by the end of the, this year, January first or somewhere.
They, they may bleed into twenty twenty-five, but it'll be a priority project for them as soon as we know. That's the great thing about Pleasant. They have two different crews. One does nothing but the repairs, the other one does the evaluation and camera work. So you're dealing with two sets of people. They can come in as soon as their schedule allows. And if you guys give us authorization for the funds, we'll, that's going to be one of the first things that I'm going to tackle tomorrow morning is getting them moving on that, because it'll take a while to get on their schedule, get it back up here from Maryland.
Okay. Counsel, any more questions? I'm sorry, Jason.
Oh, I was going to say, no, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. You want to make the motion?
If there's no other questions.
Any other discussion?
Brian, when they reline a pipe, does the flow keep flowing through it, or is it still being used?
Typically, we do a pump around. So we'll set up a temporary pump around, around that segment, and then they'll pull in a PVC rated, sewer rated section into that line, and then make sure both ends are sealed.
And then they leapfrog as they get it done?
Yeah. And then you'll just leapfrog down.
Okay.
And normally, they start at the lowest one first, they work their way back upstream. It's just easier to do the pump around that way. We tried the cure and waste stuff, and the velocity of the groundwater is so high, fourteen feet in the ground, that it doesn't allow the material to stay in place long enough to cure. The flow went right out of the sidewalk. So we have to go to the pull-in pipe. And it's flexible. They use a big machine to yank it in there. They do it three hundred something feet at a time.
It's like a balloon kind of going out, just sort of like, oh, really?
Yeah. It just pulls that thing right in.
This is getting you excited, Brian.
Take lots of pictures, Brian. I can't wait.
I'm really going to be excited when we look at the influent numbers of the wastewater plant.
Yeah, there we go.
That's what's really
I agree.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion? Jason, you had a motion.
Yes. I move that the three hundred and seventy-five thousand for sewer trunk line repairs be approved as presented.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
It's nice to be able to take care of something that the next people that'll have to deal with it are Alex's grandkids, right?
That's right.
They'll all be dead, but for real. For generations to come. We set people up for generations. That's nice.
Well, some of y'all might not be. Okay. All right, the parking waiver request, Mr. Christman.
Yes. So in your packet is some additional information provided by Mr. Brad Herman, who was here last time and made a presentation to you folks about a potential parking waiver for a planned redevelopment project at the former art warehouse, fifteen Cam Street. He has some basic information in here. The waiver request is included, along with supporting calculations, a few of the maps, analysis of surrounding businesses and their operating time, and a sample posting sign format. The only real concern that came up during the planning commission review was adjacent people that may or may not be using those, some of those Virginia Avenue parking spaces overnight. That was the only thing that came up in the planning commission meeting when they talked about it as an informational item. Mr. Herman was there at that time and presented to them as well. So he's here again tonight. If you have any questions or concerns, there's the label. Thank you all for having me here.
Hey, welcome back. See you again, sir.
What can I tell you? Well, I will say this. The information, some of this you presented, and I guess, Brian, maybe you put together some of this, too. I've had a few people out this morning. I don't know if anyone's had communication with you, but I'm hoping we've maybe got an idea. We received these packets, well, we still call them packets, they're, they're emails now. I got this late Friday night, looked through it some, saw the, you know, some of these aerial shots. And then yesterday, I spent more time with it and reading and some of your proposals. And me seeing the fact that the last time we spoke, I was under the impression the parking spaces were the town's, and basically, the sidewalk was the property line, you know, which we've come to find out. And this morning, I was out there at daybreak and saw the survey pins
Yeah.
Yeah, and everything. But, but anyway, where I'm going with this is, the, and I just want to have this discussion. The green space that's there, the grass that's behind that building, and I don't mean to get off course here, but just to give you an idea, when I was a teenager, I worked for a company that, there, it was an actual warehouse space underneath there. And what is grass now was all gravel. That whole lot was gravel, and those two doors now that have the archway over it?
Yes.
Those were the doors into the warehouse, and it was actually about over two feet off the ground. They were more like a loading dock.
Interesting.
And, but a tractor trailer could actually get into there and back up to those areas. So through the years, when the parking was built, and that got filled, I guess, and, and became green. But anyway, looking at the square footage that's there, I went out this morning, stepped some of this off, and looked at the situation. The ten parking spaces that are already yours, if they, they could remain, of course, right in place as they are, you know, of course, the town would no longer maintain that, you know, as we have in the past, you know, but that, that would be yours. But the sidewalk, from the curb to the back of the sidewalk is five feet. If the sidewalk is taken out, which I never saw this before, because I was thinking it would be in the town, you wouldn't have to have a sidewalk there if you owned it. You could put ten opposing parking spaces on the backside right into that. There's a curb cut up near the building. Here, we've got the image up here. If that had a one-way travel, and when the town, when we do something, we've got standards we have to follow, by state standards on radiuses and parking lots either. The private lot has, you have more flexibility with some of that. But anyway, there's still plenty of space. To come in with a travel lane where you see the striped lines, which could also be truck delivery, I'm not sure how the restaurant concept is going to take deliveries or whatever. But anyway, a one-way travel way through there, coming through the center of the green space, and then exiting out the bottom where the town has shrubs now, but it's actually yours, which would be the upper right, not the actual point, but where you see the blue, like the last few letters and spaces. There's, there's tree canopy there that hides that. But if one or two, actually, would just be the handicap spot and some of that curbing and sidewalk, which is, if that's removed, this loop, this one-way loop in there would allow for the parking spaces to back up to the ten existing, plus along this concrete wall that borders the railroad right away. This morning, when we paced that and stepped that off, could probably be another, at least five to seven, possibly, spaces into that wall. So where we're going with this is, the way I see it, you could have about twenty-five to twenty-seven parking spaces on your property that's there that doesn't even require a waiver, gets you out of that option as a waiver. I lost sleep last night, because before walking out to see if this would work, I'll be honest with you, I was not in favor of giving up any public tax-paying parking spaces to give that to a private entity for reserved spacing just for their purposes. So I personally was struggling with, I don't want to see this not happen. I love your concept and idea, but I couldn't go with giving up taxpayer spaces that they can't park in, you know. So, but this would resolve that. You own those ten, there could easily be, easily be another ten to fifteen added, would put you at twenty-five spaces. Yes, the green space, and when we looked this morning, I would think you could keep some of that up near the building. And I know there's a fire escape concept with the structure. And I know there's a fire escape concept with the structure. The sketch, which like a computer drawing, showed the stairway like coming out from the building, which-
Correct.
Which what I'm familiar with though, which I'm sure could be adjusted as you plan and develop this. Most fire escapes I see in the city, they run along the side of the building. You know what I'm saying? They don't, because oftentimes cities don't have that space. The fire escape's in an alley, you know, or something. So it's the cutback deal, not projecting out from a building, you know, 50 feet or more. It's actually tight to the building. So I don't think it was going to hinder you in any of the fiery egress, the safety issue with that. The green space, yes, that would, you wouldn't have that there. But the other thing I thought, for your tenants, for the people that are living there, a walk across Campbell Street, right there's in Long Park. So there's a town park that you don't have to mow and maintain. Your tenants can enjoy, and it's, it's literally right across the street in front of the library. And it's walking distance. You know, they don't, they don't have to get in a car. But I met with Councilman Sowers here and the town manager this morning because I was just excited when I saw this and we walked through and looked at it. And I'd be glad to meet you there at some point if you would want. But I definitely see the space there that's not cramped, not jammed up. We think you could even add, gain another parking space on this upper end. The striped line and that curb cut is so wide that that could be shortened up a little bit coming towards your building. It'd still be adequate for a, for a truck or tractor trailer to back into there for any type of deliveries, if that was where the restaurant would receive it. But like I say, and definitely wide enough to be, my personal opinion, a one-way, you know, come in that way and then exit out the bottom. But of course, this would just be for your, your tenants, you know, or your customers, whatever you choose. But it wouldn't be public parking. But the rest of the public parking that does exist would remain public parking. So I'll be quiet now, but anyway.
That's, no, I appreciate it. I think I followed some of it, but I think it'd be really helpful to meet you onsite and kind of talk through-
I'd be more than happy to make it.
What you're talking about. That would be, that would be great. I think, y'all keep on going. I've got, I've got some thoughts, but I want to hear more.
I want to ask, oh, yours is probably more germane.
Well, no, no, no. Just real quick. So one thing that we, that I just noticed when we were out there, those spots that are on the road, they're, they're currently, you said 20 feet in the standard for residential standard parking spot? Or for commercial, you should only be 15 feet depth per spot?
Uh, no. Normally a standard spot-
Or 18 feet?
A standard spot is 10 by 20.
But for, for private use, if you go to a commercial lot, they're using what depth?
Like on the other side of that public lot there, due to maintaining two travel lanes through that lot, they shorten those 18 feet each.
So you wouldn't even have to double what's already there, is all that I'm bringing up. You could actually maybe extend it another-
Yeah, and you know, like-
16 feet or something. You wouldn't even have to eat in all the way. And to be able to get those spots that Jason was mentioning, just as an aside.
And if you, I know from seeing around downtown Hessenburg, especially around Court Square, there's so many private parking lots. And I know you're from an urban area as well, that many times you'll see these private lots. They're not laid out like your Walmart or your commercial, or a municipal lot, you know. So there's more creativity you can have there. And you could, you know, just like here, at the radius where that turn goes in, you may, or against that concrete retaining wall there that beats, beats the railroad side. You may label, you know, four or five of those spots just compact cars. You know, it would be a, a smaller space and, you know, so tenants that are driving a Prius or, you know, something small, those are the spaces, because there's no need in parking a little car in a large spot. And you, and you get those options. With the, with the municipality, typically we-
We don't have any options.
We, we don't have options like that. And then we'd rather err on the side of anyone can park in it, even though somebody might be driving something that two cars would fit in one space, you know. But those are the things that you could do.
100%. 100%.
So the town has, and I watched the, your presentation at the last meeting. I was remote. Well, I was at home, but I was watching. The town has been maintaining those spots? Are those the ones that-
The 10.
But they're not public? They're technically belong to them?
Technically, they're on the property that he's looking at first.
How long has the town maintained those and kind of been in a de facto, these are publicly-
Since 98 on the property.
Gotcha. And I mean, in that time period, did the owners of the Art Warehouse ever do anything to improve the spaces or anything?
Well, and you know, Brad and I talked about this before. At some point in time, back in the late 90s, there was a collaborative agreement that was drafted for that particular property, but it just didn't make it to approval stage or get recorded, like a lot of the others did. So from that point on, the property essentially owned those spaces, even though they were built with collaborative CPG money. And they were not, and they were made available for public use. They were not posted or restricted in any, any way, shape, or form. One of them, farther down to the right for the blue box is his current handicap spot. Don't know why they put it all the way down there instead of being up near the building. I think near the building would be a better spot for the handicap. In fact, that was one of the things that we had talked about this morning. So I think that, yes, we've been, for the good of the community, just kind of take care of things there. Not a whole lot of maintenance has occurred there. We've spent some line marking, been a little bit of street sweeping. We pushed some snow there, you know, in the winter time when, when we get some snow. But for the most part, they've been available for general public parking since 98.
Because I just didn't know if there, and you mentioned there was some funding related to that. I'm just trying to make sure that A, we wouldn't like run afoul of any kind of stipulations that existed on that parking or that might be tucked away in a drawer somewhere.
That is 20 years.
Okay.
And in 2008, the town negotiated with all the individual property owners to get perpetual parking adjustments for all of those, instead of having a 20-year. The original was a 20-year deal, 98 to 2008. 2008, we re-upped all of those to, in perpetuity. But this property never had one, and therefore was never updated. So those 10 spaces, or whatever there, plus that, that whole area there is within the, the certain boundary of-
Because I just didn't know if there was like a adverse possession thing with us taking care of it so long or something. Even though they're not belonging to the town or anything, I mean, you do, you do lose 10 spaces that have de facto been parking that everybody uses for a long time.
Well, that would really depend on-
But I'm still really supportive of the project. Like, I want to see it happen. I was just, I'm just saying stuff.
So first of all, I appreciate you raising this idea about using some of the green space in the back because I think early on in the project, we looked at it, but we couldn't quite figure out how to make it work. Because I think we're definitely coming from a place where I think having green space there, both for the restaurant, right? Because I think it's an integral part, you know, when the weather permits for the restaurant to be able to kind of spill outside and have tables out there and accommodate a larger, you know, larger client base. But also, you know, for, for the apartment residents as well to just have kind of green spaces. You know, right there, you'd just be able to kind of, you know, hop outside, sit outside with a lawn chair, enjoy yourself. Put picnic tables out there, that sort of stuff. So I think we're coming from a place where, you know, we really do want to try and preserve that green space to the extent possible, right? I don't think it's an all or nothing, you know, issue, right? I think there's, I think there's some, some middle ground there. So when we looked at it before, we were really challenged to figure out how to accommodate parking in what is not, you know, geometrically very conducive to parking, right? Because it's, it's triangular. But based on-
Right. I'm sorry.
But based on, based on kind of what you, what you raised and kind of, you know, I was going to call it a gentle push, which is, which is super helpful. And again, I'm really appreciative for that. I spent some, spent some time with the architect and, you know, we're very early on on this. But I do think there is a way where we can create, I'm going to use the wrong terms, but it's kind of angle, instead of have the spots be perpendicular as they are now, angle those spots, right? So you pull in, right? And you have it be one way, right? So you would enter from, I guess, the left-hand side and you'd kind of travel one way to the right-hand, right-hand side. And I mean, you can see where the property line roughly, and again, I did this on, you know, whatever PowerPoint, but it's pretty accurate, because once you drop those pins in, you can kind of figure out where, where they sit. Oh, thank you. I'm not quite sure. But, but you can actually, you know, the top of the, you know, the property line kind of runs a good, you know, good bit of the way towards the top of the alley, right? So if you start those angled spots from there, right? And have the other, you know, basically the other angled, the other side of the angled spots would be where kind of the 10 parking spaces sign is, but shift that down a little bit, right? And have that alley run through the middle. And maybe we're talking about the same, the same thing. I can kind of show you what we're talking about. That would get, you know, I don't know, 18, 22, like some, you know, ballpark. We haven't laid it out yet. We need to get a civil engineer involved, right? We got a whole bunch of things we got, things we got to figure-
Preserve some of that green space.
And we would still be able to preserve some of that green space. You know, rough, I, I think you're talking about shifting maybe 16 feet over, something like that now. And we got to figure out again how it interacts with that egress, that metal egress structure that we talked about before. But there is, you know, there's, there's some ideas. So again, I appreciate you kind of starting to get our, shift our creative thinking. So around this, you know, two things I want to mention, you know, number one is cost, right? So none, none of this unfortunately is free. It's going to cost something. We don't know what we're building, so we don't know how much it is yet. But we are super sensitive to cost, right? Because, you know, honestly, if there's one thing that's going to, you know, make us not be able to move forward on this project, right? We're passionate about it. We want to do it. It's going to be the cost, right? And we're still working on the model and making sure that we can get everything to pencil. But, you know, and that's not to say that this is a, you know, we can't make this work, but everything that costs us more money takes us in the wrong direction. We got to figure out how to get in the right direction.
One thing we discussed too, if this helps, Brian and I had the conversation out there this morning. The additional parking into that space doesn't have to be asphalt or concrete. A matter, a matter of fact, if, we figured you could probably keep about 10, maybe 15 feet of green space right up against the sidewalk that runs right against the building all the way. That would be this, the shadowed area here. Where those back doors.
Yes.
Okay. That, you know, must be probably a six-foot, eight-foot sidewalk there, looks to be. And we're thinking, you could still maintain a grass buffer there. But that parking lot, if you did that in gravel, the cost saving is huge. The other thing we're talking about, you have a pervious, the runoff versus that being concrete or asphalt and, you know, dealing with, okay, where's all the drainage going or whatever? If that's gravel, it's going to, it won't be any different basically than what you're, what you have now with grass. And the cost savings there is, is huge. And the other thing with that, yeah, there, there can be more maintenance that comes with a gravel lot than the other. But, but the starting out, and the other thing, the fact that it's private and it's just yours, it's not going to get the traffic like the, the main travel way out there or the other parking, you know, back behind it. The other thing I failed to mention, and Brian brought it up this morning. If the sidewalk was removed between those parking spaces that exist and the new ones on the backside, you could leave that curb in place for the ones that exist where the sidewalk was, the four feet. Removing that, putting a green space in, just like across the street or right behind that, all the bushes and shrubs that are in that other barrier right there that you see, that the other cars are parked on. Okay. The other parking lot there has the nice shrubs and everything there. You could have that same thing. Instead of parking spaces meeting actually end to end, you could have that five-foot buffer that's got vegetation and stuff there to help with the aesthetics and everything on it. But I understand that, and I'd be in the same boat as you. I mean, you're, you're looking at the investor side and-
I'm just trying to make the numbers work.
Right. What's going to make the numbers work. And what's going to be pretty, you know-
Yeah. And what allows us to deliver, you know, workforce housing, right? Like that's, you know, we, you know, we could, I've said this a million times, you guys are probably tired of hearing it. Like, I can make this project work tomorrow and just charge like market rent rates, right? Like that's, you know, you could, you could do that, but that's not the project that we want to build, right? And I can get commercial loans and we can do that. But we really want to keep these, you know, the apartments affordable for people with jobs. And so that's what's making this a real challenge and, you know, some, some of these things more difficult.
If you, if your ideal comes about and you're able to kind of achieve the dream on the cost of the housing, what do you think the cost breakdown for the different units would be in terms of your, your monthly? I know you're looking at different kinds of units, so there's going to be some that's more expensive, some that's less. But like, what's the ballpark you're looking at in terms of those monthly rent numbers?
That's a great question.
And that might be super far in the future. I'm just thinking in my head, if, if you could, if there was a way to have it be a little more mixed and you have some like real, like genuine workforce housing, which is maybe more like, you know, for something like that, I don't know, six, seven, eight, that's probably crazy low right now, versus this is just a cool hip thing and you get some people that are like, Lou Ray's a cool hip town. I'm a Nova, I don't want to say yuppie type person.
That, that is-
Because I'm thinking it's long, long term.
Right? Like, I could go-
And when I saw your presentation, I was like, I like what he's saying.
You could go sell these, you know, one-bedroom apartments for 15, for 1,500, I don't know, between 1,500 and $2,000 to people who live in DC who want a weekend second place.
But you're interested in like local people that work.
Downtown mall, right? It's like everybody that lives, lives down there. But that's not, uh-
And I appreciate that.
That's not, that's not what we want to build, right? Which is another reason why we got to solve the parking problem, right? Because people are going to be here every day. These are not weekends, you know, weekend warriors. And so we haven't fin, we haven't finalized everything, anything yet. We got like studio apartments that are probably in the 700 to 800 range right now. We've got one-bedroom apartments that are kind of like in the 850 to 1,000 range. And then we got two bedrooms that are about, I think about 1,250 to 1,400, depending on, yeah.
I appreciate it.
And we, we're, we're trying to keep everything-
Put me on the waiting list for one of the 700 ones. I got you.
So one, one issue I want to bring up, because Jason brought this up earlier, so I need to make sure I mention this. The nine spaces that are shown on the map there, they're currently in the Virginia Avenue right away as public property. So technically, under law, Jason's going to correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm wrong. Because that's disposition of public property, because of the potential restriction that Brad and his group are asking for, we actually have to advertise and hold a public hearing for that. So if you need more time to meet him onsite and talk about some things, if they need more time to try to figure out a slightly different option that may do it. But any disposition of the Virginia Avenue park spaces right there that are labeled nine space, parking spaces, any disposition of those requires a public hearing. It's advertised in advance. So we would see this again if that was the case. If it stayed the way it is and he went all the way through, we would have to advertise for a public hearing for that at our October 8th.
Okay. You're talking about the nine right against the building?
The nine.
Not the 10 that they already, right. Yeah, because I would prefer the, the nine to not be any restricted spaces. And here's the other thing too. In my background in law enforcement, crime prevention, all that, your tenants, I like the fact of, and you even mentioned it in some of your wording here in the presentation, about worrying about the safety and all the tenants, that, you know, they're not parking a block away to, to come to where they live. You know, walking from their car and back out and everything. That's the other thing I love about this, getting this parking. And I realize the green space, but still, we've, we're coming from two different angles here, you know, preserving the public parking, plus the safety issue of your, your tenants being right there. And it, and then it also isn't safety. It becomes an issue when it's raining, when it's bad weather and everything else, you know, they're not walking-
There's a convenience factor too. 100%.
Right, right. They're not, you know, heading a long ways to try to get to the car or get back in. But anyway.
So what, what would you need from us tonight? Because I, I ride by there a lot. I think it's way underutilized parking. I think it's open 70% of the time. I rode by there three, four times today. It, it never reached peak. So I'd, I'd approve it like it is. And you've got 19 spaces right on top of it. If you want to create a few more spaces in the green space, that'd be great. If not, it wouldn't, I wouldn't have a lot of heartburn with it. I think there's parking on Circle Street. I think there's a lot of options to park. So what would, what would be the outcome tonight that we?
Personally, I would love to get approval, but with my, you know, gentleman's agreement on the record, call it whatever you want. You and I are going to sit down. I want to understand what your plan is, because I'm not a very conceptual-
I'd like to postpone this vote tonight until we have time, you deceive in what we're-
Here's the, here's the one, here's the one challenge I have, which is we have a study period that ends, actually, I think it's exactly a month from today. And I need to, like, I know I'm not going to get a final, like, verdict on the parking because if we got to go to this public comment period. But it would give us a lot of, I don't know, confidence, I think, if, if we could kind of have this as a backstop. Again, I, I, you know, I really do want to meet you onsite. I want to walk through this. I want to show you what, what our architect also is thinking. You all may be thinking the same thing. I'm just, again, not, I'm not great on the kind of verbal conceptual. I got to sit there and pace it off. So I really do want to, you know, explore that and, you know, understand, you know, what the implications are on the space. Make, you know, figure out how many spaces we can get out of it, right?
We can lay that out.
Yeah. How many spaces we get. And then, you know, roughly what the costs, what the costs are going to be. And that, you know, that'll kind of, you know, dictate what we are capable, you know, capable of doing. But as a backstop, I'd love to have a vote on this tonight, if that's possible. If that's not possible, I understand, right? You know, I'm not-
No, I mean, I, I like to just, I mean, I, I feared this building when it closed, that we would, it'd be years that it would sit here. I think this is why we put this in the ordinance a few years ago, this mixed-use building. And, you know, we, we changed the ordinance to allow more flexibility on parking. Any planning, zoning publication you read now, everyone is, is, do not kill projects for called parking. But I do think it's a reality. I get it. But I just think there's a lot of options around there. I think it's underutilized. I mean, even the- I mean, even the cross the street at the chamber, I mean, you know, weekends, Melissa's event, that's usually open, off-street parking, on-street parking, I think there's a lot of places around there. So I'd be in favor of giving the waiver and, and you're going to be, you're going to be married to the town here, working back and forth on a lot of things. So I trust that, you know, you'll, you'll work with us and try to come up with something reasonable. So I, I'd be in favor of at least giving you that, you know, like, we're appreciative that you're coming to town here and doing this. And again, nothing against asking these questions, this is the time to do it, but I would be more than happy before with you to not give you the waiver and just work with you in the future to try to, you know, work out any things that we might need to work out, find a few more parking spaces, maybe delineate some other spots somewhere else. But it's important that this building not sit there for years and years, because we got buildings that have been sitting for years. And I think this is great that you're coming in and hitting the iron while it's hot, while this building has only been vacant for really a couple of years now at that. So it's, it's, it's great that it's being reused, so.
I think it's a great project, and also the fact that you're thinking about like restaurant stuff and activities that's actually geared towards local demand, which I think is really important, you don't always see that. I'm thinking about what could make sense, I mean, we could, I suppose we could give the waiver, it doesn't necessarily mean you even make use of it, it just means that it exists as an option, and then you could discuss the other options that exist.
It would have to be conditioned to all the public hearings.
Get the hearing.
Because the way the waiver's worded right now, it would restrict those nine spaces that we cannot do without advertising and holding a public hearing. So if you wanted to make a conditional component, provided that we have advertised and held a public hearing, what can you suggest, Jason?
Yeah, I would recommend if you want to make the approval tonight, I would suggest a motion that approves the request with the exception of the request that there's a dedication of public parking spots. That way then that could be handled as a separate issue in the future after it's been properly advertised and you have a public hearing. So essentially it would, it would approve the request as presented with that one exception, that there's not going to be any public parking spaces dedicated for private use.
And what's, what's the timeframe for the public hearing? Because the only other option in my head would be, you still get it done by the end of the month, but we do like work session as a special session where there's action, have a hearing and have votes, but that's a little messy, I don't know. I'll defer to y'all on that.
What is the timeframe now, based on if we, if we published it electronically?
The timeframe hasn't changed based on the state code, it's still two, one ad per week.
For this one, it's just a single ad, I think, a week before the public hearing.
Single ad.
So if we held a special meeting, what's our next?
Two Tuesdays.
Twenty-something?
Twenty-fourth?
September twenty-fourth? Okay, if we post an ad on Monday the sixteenth, that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine days in advance. We post an ad on Monday the sixteenth, we could have, we could have a public hearing and a special meeting on the twenty-fourth.
But that might be too late for you, so I don't know, I'm just trying to lay everything out there.
The more certainty we can get prior to October eighth...
So we're, we're saying that these nine public spots are going to go with your building, you know, you'll, is that what I'm understanding? That they'll have access to those exclusively, those nine spaces? That's not...
No, it's not exclusive.
Okay, so what, what, what are we having here for?
That would be the, that would be why it needs to be hearing, right? If we're going to dis, a disposition of public property.
There is a restriction on, that is proposed for nighttime use, only by his...
Oh, okay, okay. Well, that's, I mean, we can do that. Is that time sensitive if we give them the waiver? I mean, we can do that whenever, I mean, that's...
Well, there's, we can legally give them the waiver without holding a public hearing, though, that's, I think what Jason's trying to do.
Unless you put the condition on, conditional on the hearing.
I guess I've got to say that it's two separate items. There's authority for council to waive the exact requirements of the, of the zoning orders with respect to parking. And then there's a separate issue of whether council wants to, as part of that, that waiver, dedicate public, public spaces for private use.
During that specific time that's been requested.
Yeah, the only, the big concern I have with the specific time, if the, well, first of all, the nine parking spaces that we're talking about now that are up near the building, if Domino's Pizza was still in operation, someone would probably be here tonight, you know? So there's a vacant business, B1 business, that is there right now that use that for employees and people picking up and everything. So they've moved, so that's empty. But there's tenants above that in apartments, and there's four cars there every morning, every night and every morning, I even spoke with two of them. They actually roll some trashcans out there so they got a place to park when they come back home. But the thing with the six to eight, the six to eight says that no one else can park there from six PM to, or nine.
Nine AM.
Six PM to nine AM, it can only be those tenants. But nothing says those tenants are vacating those spots come nine AM. You know, so a tenant may have a car that sits there for two days or, or three days, you know? So it's not like these are all freed up. Now, if they are public parking as it exists, a tenant could still use them, you know? The, the current parking actually has both two and four hour limits. That's how it's been since that was installed. So basically, if you parked in any of those as a customer, employee, or whatever, technically you were supposed to vacate the, the space, you know, within four hours. But that's what I realized too, is you're, you're competing with other tenants that are there, plus I don't know what the future business may be there that goes in there. It could be a business such as Domino's that has nighttime hours that, you know, after six PM it's still a needed use.
I think, excuse me, Jackie just mentioned that a, an attorney's going in there, an attorney from Harrisonburg.
Okay.
Yeah, rented, rented that space. So I imagine he'll be pretty good offset with the tenants. I think, I can't remember, was it this meeting or the planning committee meeting? But we did come up like, you know, hey, you know, what if a resident does not, you know, doesn't leave for the day? Maybe they work out of the co-working space, right? That we, that we have in the building? Or maybe they walk to work, or, you know, or maybe they telecommute two, two days a week? And so when this came up before, like, you know, we plan on having in our rental agreements, you know, the, the rules for the parking spaces, and the parking spaces are, you're there from like nine to six, and then like you need to move, they'll have a hanging tag, right? So that we know like who's actually, you know, a resident or whatever, but that'll also allow us to figure out, hey, who's in these spaces that shouldn't be in these spaces kind of after nine AM, right? So, and then that, and then, you know, we'll take on the obligation of, of policing those spots, right? And we've, actually, I had a conversation the other day with a local management company, so we'll have local property management here in Luray, local, local maintenance here in Luray as well.
Okay, and that's...
But, but, yeah.
The chief's hearing, that was one of the things we were, I was going to get to as well, is that I would not want our police burden with that enforcement. But the other thing is, just from my experience in a city, a lot of which you're speaking took place in college campus, I mean, college housing areas, private business, Walmart, whatever, there was private contract towing companies that would do that, but those are private lots. This is still a public lot. Jason, I don't know where we get into issues that, yes, there may be a sign posted, but on a public lot and a private entity being the tow company that comes and, you know...
Yeah, and I don't want to get in a situation, I don't want to get in a situation where we have to, yeah.
Because I, right.
I think that's, something's gone wrong if we're...
They could just park down there with their empty spaces.
Yeah.
I mean, their empty spaces, they're like ninety percent of the time, they can just park right there. Especially at night, there's no people, party there at night. I mean, I'd just make a motion to approve the waiver, and we'll have the hearing at a, at a later, at a later period to talk about the, the public spaces there. I totally understand it, but I, I just will work with you. And, and again, I understand parking is important, but I still say we've got so much parking around there that's vacant most of the time.
Thinking this morning, all those trucks, I mean, everything you see there in that photograph, it was like that this morning with a Cisco truck parked in the travelway of the parking behind that.
Yep.
That was eight thirty this morning. Now, the drill crew had this blocked off your ten spaces?
Yes.
Because there was a core drilling crew there for an underground tank.
Yep.
So that was blocked. But the other part at eight thirty this morning was, was filled with Cisco truck making the delivery gathering grounds, so you couldn't even drive through there. So, I mean, it does come and go, and I agree, like, at nighttime we ride through there, and I think I've seen on average six, six cars be there at nighttime.
I just...
But I also don't want to see us approve something that you've made the investment and your people are there, when I say people, your tenants and businesses, and we see we've got a problem, and then trying to address it after the fact, after you're already in there spending the, I, I want this to happen.
Right.
I didn't sleep last night, if I didn't care, I would have slept last night. I want this to happen, but also want it to be something that works. And it's an election year, I'm going to share something too. I've been speaking with different people, and this parking issue has come up four times and I never mentioned it. So these are citizens that have listened to the, the comments and the past council member, I mean, past council sessions, and I've had citizens ask, how, how are y'all going to allow this to be private parking there, you know, in that public parking lot? And I didn't start the conversation, so it's on people's minds too, so.
That's important.
Well, in good conscience, I could not possibly impede this project with parking, with all the parking that's around it, I think it'd be worked out. So I make a motion that we approve the waiver, work with you in the future to develop some of the parking, make some specific plans, but for right now, for your purposes, so you can move forward, I make a motion that we amend, that we give the waiver and also work in a subsequent future meeting if, if we need to advertise for the, the public parking, as Jason had stated. So I'll make that motion.
So Ling, are you making the first motion or the motion with conditions?
A motion with the condition. The second, the condition would be that the motion to approve the waiver with the second part, that we eventually have the hearing for the public spots to be utilized at night by this facility at some point. That can be into September or afterward, you know, anytime that we can get that advertised. So that's, does that make sense? That's a motion to approve the waiver, so you can move forward with this plans, close on the property, and then we'll come back and do a public hearing for the, for the, for the public spaces to be utilized for a specific time, which I believe was what, six to nine or something like that at night, when it's empty anyway. So that's my motion.
We have to...
Okay, are we clear on the motion?
Waiver on the ten, but we're, we got to go through that hearing process for the nine. And I assume that means that there's, you know, an action point after that hearing for the nine where theoretically we could say no, not that we're planning on doing that, but...
Well, I think there's another issue...
We're not shutting the book on everything tonight, I guess is what I'm saying.
I think there's another issue too, that not meaning to be the roadblock. I want to see the solution to this, but I don't want to make it a... The, Brian, do you have the ordinance?
Yep.
The requirement for off-street parking, which exists in our code, if the space is there that allows for it to create the necessary parking spaces based on whatever the structure or whatever it is, if the space allows for it, it's to be developed. The waiver comes into if there's no space available or if that space is not usable. It's a, it's a huge drainage ditch, or it's such a steep grade that it's not practical. Where is, let me see, I've got to get...
It says the applicant must detail the number of proposed off-street parking spaces and demonstrate that a reasonable amount has been made to maximize off-street parking on-site and/or on nearby areas where off-street parking may be available by lease or agreement.
Yeah, I think we wrote it, I mean, I wrote it.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. I mean, and the point was that some of these, because our, our code, you know, has so many parking spaces per square footage and, you know, this, this wasn't designed for, for cars. I mean, most of this downtown area wasn't, so, you know, the idea was trying to be so stringent and give people flexibility to sort of work around and make some plans and, and work with the town and knew some off-street, on-street, sort of what we're trying to do here. So I guess we're just, I'm trying to just move, you know, my, my point is just moving on, give you the waiver, we'll just continue to work on, but give you the confidence that, you know, we're not, parking's not going to derail this, you know, or, or put you in a situation where we're asking you to invest thousands and thousands of dollars into parking that I don't frankly think we really have a problem with. But that's just, you know, my view.
Couple of thoughts on this, so a standard spot at Walmart is eight and a half feet wide. If that ten car lot is private, which is yours, you can actually fit instead of ten spaces in there, you can fit a good thirteen, just in that, just by virtue of doing that. And all you've done is paid for some paint, you've restripped it, you paid for paint. If the other nine car area was privatized in a two-week period, once again, you don't have to abide by our parking regulations, instead of having nine spots there, you could fit eleven. And you could allocate two of those for twenty-four hour use for public use, or three or whatever number, and you're just about there. I mean, you're getting really close, and you haven't done anything but bought, bought a couple gallons of paint. And then we could figure out a couple more spots beyond that, so. Just another thought, value engineering it, trying to think of it from that standpoint.
No, that's great.
You know, I think there's some things we can do that wouldn't be super, because I get it, I get your, I get your budget constraints. I think there's some things we could do that wouldn't really impact either party that tremendously.
We're still losing public parking that exists.
Yes, 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 so that's why we need to, so how can we fill that gap? And I appreciate that, Jason, I do, I came out there, met with you, and you had some, you do have some great points with it. So if we can figure out a way within, I would still say, let's kick the can down the road two weeks and try to find some creative value engineering ways to achieve what you're trying to do and to maintain the citizens' access to parking. I think we can figure it out, I think we're close.
And basically, the two considerations that I'm really conscious of is, I'd love for you to get to sit down with Jason and figure it out the way you described it. I'd also love for you to get the highest level of certainty as soon as possible so you can do what you need to do. So that could be voting for the waiver with the understanding that you might not even do it that way, you might love what Jason says and do that, you just have the waiver on your desk, so you could do the other thing. It could be, we do kick it two weeks and we get you some kind of letter from the town manager that you can show to the people you need to have meetings with that says the town is a good faith partner, this will happen eventually. I want to get you the certainty, but I also really want to be conscious of what Jason's bringing, if that makes sense.
If your green space didn't exist that can meet the parking requirements that you need, I'd be with what everybody else here is saying, okay? And, well, somewhat, I still struggle with losing parking, but, but you wouldn't have had options. I struggled tonight with the fact that you have options and you can meet the parking requirement, and if it's gravel, very little expense compared to what you're going to put into that building with sprinklers and the total remodel and the fire escapes, I mean, we're talking huge amount of money. The parking lot is very small compared to the grand scheme of what your plans are, in my opinion. But I am not comfortable with, space exists, the square footage is there to accommodate the needed parking, but we choose not to do it just because we like the grass, yet we're taking away public spaces that other customers and taxpayers pay for. We're still maintaining those nine spaces, they still belong to the town, but we're allowing a private entity to reserve those spaces. And I'm worried if we go down that road, what stops the chop house or broad porch from saying, hey, you know what, we really get busy, both sides of the street are packed really get busy, most sides of the street are packed at dinnertime, we want four reserved places for our restaurant, you know, we want, you know, if we start that, I, I hate to go down that road, but anyway, the, the space exists, that's my struggle tonight, I'm gonna be quiet now, but it, it could be done there, I'm done.
If the motion said something like approving the waiver, conditional on the hearing regarding the nine spaces, and conditional on the expectation of a good faith effort by the developer to examine the proposals that Jason has brought up, and see if it can be reasonably, cost-effectively be done within, you know, just your private purview, I'd vote for that motion, I just, I wanna make sure that what you brought's considered, you know, but I'd vote for that tonight, cuz I really do wanna see the project happen.
I wanna see this move forward, but, uh, the initial motion, Lincoln, doesn't require anything for you to do after tonight with creating your own spaces, out of that space, square footage that you have, and I would, I would like to see that be a condition at that...
That we, that we examine that, I'd, I'd love you, yeah, I mean, what, what you just laid out would be fantastic.
Like I said, you're getting ready to invest millions of dollars into this building, you're gonna have place to park, we'll, we'll work it out, I mean, I think we can, they're all good issues, I mean, even though, uh, you know, you know, I don't want parking to rail, and I'm not gonna say that parking's not something we need to look at, but I just think we can look at it with giving you the confidence that we can move this forward, so you can, you can, you know, get the building in your possession, and, and we can continue to work, so I make a motion that we, uh, that we approve the waiver, uh, and I think the second part to the motion, that any necessary hearing, uh, would be held, if we were gonna give up any time period for public, we couldn't park there, even though most of that late-night parking gets empty anyway, uh, and the third, we'll work with the, uh, the soon-to-be owner in any kind of plans, uh, to develop parking, uh, off-street that may be necessary, uh, does that sound pretty good to you?
Okay.
And I would phrase that third condition as like, a good faith effort...
Right.
...by the owner to examine on, on the property parking feasibility of that.
I'll amend that and add that as well, so those kind of three components to it, that's my motion.
Okay, let's, uh, Brian, do you have that, can you read that motion back, please? Well, I think, I think we all need to know what we're voting on here.
I can try, I can try saying it again.
Try to say it again, Lee.
So, uh, motion to approve the parking waiver, two would be, a public hearing would be held for any diminution in public parking times, uh, the public spaces that were shown on that map, those non-spots, and the third would be that we will continue to work with the applicant, the soon-to-be, hopefully soon-to-be owner, to seek ways to maximize parking on and off-site, uh, with, with staff, council, the owners, those three sort of elements to the motion.
Okay, all right, we all have that now.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Lincoln, all right, we need a sec?
Do you think that hits it, or it needs to be?
There is, there's, there's, the way that sounds to me is, we're gonna discuss and work together on this off-street parking, but nothing there has teeth in it to make something get done, and I've gotta say with, with Brian, with his years of experience with construction, uh, I had some time with VDOT, with the, this lot we're talking about is not a challenge as far as that being feasible, um, feasibility's not the question, it, it's, it's, it's practically on grade, uh, as far as cutting sod off of it in, in gravel, you know, and I can tell you, uh, crusher run right now is front of $330 a load, and 57s are, uh, running a little more, but I mean, for, for under $20,000, easily, probably under $10,000 with the local, that, that could be gravel, that could be stripped of the topsoil and gravel, and their curb cut is even already there to get into it, the only thing that's really required, the lower end where the bushes are and stuff, is getting the bushes out to come out of it, so it's, it's a doable process to create that off-street parking that's not asking for mountains to be moved.
Well, I think that's the third element of it, and, you know, we do, we have to sign a zoning permit at some point, I mean, I think if there's a big public interest issue or safety, or we just don't think this is right, we can always, you know, uh, come back and talk about that, you know, before we issue a zoning permit, but, you know, so, those are the three sort of parts of the motion, and, you know, that's all I got.
All right, we do have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Feels like a Ron thing.
All right.
Got a second anywhere, got a first, we got a second?
I'd love for us to do it in two weeks, and give you full 100% confidence and not have this halfway measure, does that meet your timeframe still, in two weeks, you would still have another 14 days, correct?
Yes.
So that would be fine? Like, if, let's say, let's say we came up with something like...
Sure.
Oh, you can put down previous pavers in that whole area that's green space right now, it'll still be green, if people need to park there, they can, you have the spots, if they don't need to park there, and the, the public spot, parking spots are empty, they can park there too, and it doesn't matter either way, I mean, you know, and then your space still looks beautiful, so there's probably some things that we can come up with in a two-week period, again, to innovate.
And if we do that, we, we should get you like the nicest letter ever, that says the town is gonna make sure you have parking, it means like...
I'll, I'll meet with that, with you whenever you're, got your, suits your schedule.
Yeah, yeah, we'll find, not this week, we'll find a time, next week, no, I, I appreciate that, um, sure, if, if, um, two weeks from now, obviously, is before our October, uh, deadline, so, um, we can, we can do that, I just, I don't wanna minimize the, I think, I don't wanna oversimplify what the solution is, um, I think, uh, you know, um, I, I think sitting down and really kind of looking at it and really understanding what the costs are, and we wanna build a really nice building, I don't wanna build the cheapest building, like, there are lots of places that I know we can cut corners, and, again, we can make the, the numbers work, but that's not the sort of project, you know, we're not building Taj Mahal here, but I do wanna build places that people are happy to come home to, and, you know, and, uh, and something that, you know, aesthetically kind of fits with the, the keeping of, you know, of the town, which is beautiful, um, and, and I get a little bit nervous when we start re-architecting the building about moving kind of that, the metal egress and stuff, and stuff like that, you know, um, you know, um, I think we need to look at, you know, avoid ripple effects that are really gonna start to change the design of the building, so I think we got, I think, you know, I'm happy to look at it, and I know, happy to, I wanna look at it, I really do wanna look at it with you, I'm excited about the opportunity, two weeks, if, if two weeks works better for you all, then two weeks is absolutely fine by us.
Yeah, so Jason, your point that there's no, like, we have no teeth at that point, that's a fair point, I mean, you, I've, it's kinda giving up the game if we approve it tonight, frankly, and that's, and then maybe that's okay.
Well, I mean, yeah, I think, I think your point, which is like, you know...
I think you're a good actor.
Yeah, we're, uh, you're, you're stuck with us for a long, long time, right, like I always say, like, this, you know, this, this building is my, my kids' problems, right, uh, and, um, and this is not, you know, I'm sure there are lots of little details, you know, over the, you know, next whatever is year or so that we're gonna have to work together on, so, you know, this is, um, you know, uh, yeah, I'm not looking to kind of, you know, score a win here and disappear on you guys or anything like that.
Doesn't do you any good.
Two weeks, yeah, two weeks is fine.
Okay, so the motion died for lack of second, so we have decided to advertise for a public hearing in two weeks on those nine spots, is that correct?
That's correct.
And, and there'll be, we'll make the 24th a special meeting, so we can vote on it, and...
Jason and I have already worked out the timeline here.
Okay. Do we need to vote on that, or can we do it by acclamation, okay, everybody okay with that?
You've still got my cell number?
Yes, I'm sure, I'm sure I do, but I'll, I'll stick around for after the meeting.
And you all will need and...
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna...
Look it over.
We'll set a date tonight.
Okay, all right, okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir Will.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hearn. All right, Mr. Bykens, you have anything for us?
I don't have anything, my mayor, thank you.
Good. Any council comments? All right, um, I did hear from Mr. Cooper Smith on the pickleball courts, he is elected to pass on the option right now, um, he does wanna be involved if we decide to go ahead at some point with the tennis courts and the basketball courts, like we talked about over there, um, we do need to pick a mayor and a vice mayor to vote at BML, I've been doing to last several years, if anybody else wants to do it, it doesn't have to be the mayor or the vice mayor, so anybody wanna be the voting delegate? Don't all, don't all speak at once now, you know?
I think we should.
You wanna, you wanna do it, Lincoln, for your last one?
What are you gonna vote on, you're gonna go crazy, huh?
Well, you gotta be there at 8:30 Monday morning now.
In that case.
I thought that would cut it.
I'll be there.
I thought that would cut it, you wanna, you wanna do it?
Sure.
Okay, so, all right, we need, uh, then we need an alternate, don't we, or a second?